Okay, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, August 25th, 2021. If we could have roll call please.
Commissioner Whitson?
Present.
Commissioner Wydilla?
Here.
Commissioner Mamonie?
Present.
Commissioner Prickett?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Chair Stephenson?
Here.
Okay, at this time I would like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance and Commissioner Wydilla will be leading us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America in particular public where it sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there anyone that wishes to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? Non-agenda item none there? Uh, anyone out there unmute yourself at this time? Not seeing any and there were no comments submitted correct. Okay. And with that we will go into, there's no agenda updates, right?
No agenda updates, Mr. Chair, depending on how long the first two items, we may ask for a set over on the third item. As a four B, but we'll let time be the judge of that.
So if it's still Wednesday, we're...
As long as you order us breakfast then Tim will be okay.
All right. And tonight we have a continuation of the hearing for case file LU 00102021 Fox Ridge Apartments. This is a type three application. And again, this is a continuation of the hearing from August 14th?
August 11th.
August 11th, sorry about that. And before we get into the hearing, I'd like to explain a little bit about the Planning Commission and the procedures that will be following for tonight's public hearing. The Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Troutdale residents who've been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms and they're strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use-related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivision, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they're simply making a recommendation to the city council who renders the final decision. Planning Commission hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. And the hearing will proceed as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the comprehensive plan, development code, or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then followed by any opponents, and then by any parties that are neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to the closing of the public hearing, any participant requests an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request by either continuing the public hearing to a future date or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. And as a final note, these hearings are recorded, so if you wish to testify, please state your name and address for the record. And at this time, I would ask if there's any conflict of interest, ex parte communication, or bias other than driving by the side that any commissioner needs to declare at this time.
Chair Stephenson?
Commissioner Allen.
Just direct staff to an email that I sent them.
Okay. There's an email.
Mr. Allen, when did you send that email?
Uh, it was in response to your email and it was just before the meeting.
All right, give us one moment, track that down.
And I guess I will move to Commissioner Mamonie. Commissioner Mamonie was out of town for the first hearing and the instructions were to Commissioner Mamonie to read his packet that he received thoroughly, the first one and the second one, and to watch the videotape of the entire hearing that we had on...
Mr. Chair, thank you, thank you for being three steps ahead of us. I was patiently waiting for my turn after we had solved Commissioner Allen's situation. Yes, I was not in attendance at the meeting of August 11th, but thanks to Amber, I received a video at all the minutes and all the public comment from that meeting, from that meeting, which I did review. I took notes, extensive notes, and I reviewed the entire video and entire testimony. And so I feel personally, of course, this is a level of self-interest radiate to contribute to the effort of the Planning Commission. Of course, I leave it to you and to my colleagues at the Commission to gauge this opportunity. But thanks to Amber, I received the video and I reviewed the entire Planning Commission meeting from August 11th.
Awesome, okay, thank you. Anyone have any issue with that? Okay, great. And Commissioner Allen?
I think Commissioner Allen was referring to an email that he provided to us in response to the citizen who had emailed about concerns about it and mentioned to contribute at the time in the proper way, and that citizen has done that.
Okay.
I think we're okay.
We're okay there.
I also believe I already responded to it in the meeting, our previous meeting.
You did.
Okay, great. Anyone else have anything? You've been seen driving down Holley, okay, okay, good. With that, then we will go ahead and reopen the hearing, continuation of the hearing on case file LU 00102021 Fox Ridge Apartments. And this is a type three quasi judicial hearing, and the Planning Commission will be the deciding body for this. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to you, planning commissioners and people here and in Zoom land. As the Chair mentioned, this is a continuation of the hearing. The public, public testimony period occurred at the 11th. It was gavelled out, we're currently effectively in deliberation. As you were deliberating a few weeks ago, there was a request for some additional or supplemental information from staff as well as some confirmation needed from the applicant on a couple of items. And I'm going to pull those items here on screen in just a moment because we're working with a different AV system tonight or setup than we had typically. I just need to do a few more clicks, so please bear with me while I get our settings correct here. Okay, for folks at home, can you see effectively the memo that we included in the Planning Commission packet?
Yes.
Okay, this is effectively a summary document again because since we've had a continuation of the hearing, this was the requested information. So there were basically three large components that we were able to provide updates for, for you folks. The, the first one, and I'm going to just briefly unmask myself just so I can enunciate better. The first is a, a attachment to this memo which shows a table of the parking situation of the four other complexes in Troutdale that are in the proximate area of this. You may recall, at the first meeting, we had presented you our findings on Eagle Ridge, which is admittedly further away than the subject site is from other properties, but we felt was the most relevant and accurate comp for this property. Since that time, we've done studies, including weeknight check-ins at nine o'clock to basically match what we did with Eagle Ridge to determine utilization. So we'll cover that table here shortly. The applicant was able to submit to us effectively a revised site plan. It doesn't change the degree of the conform of, of the variance being stopped, but what it did do is confirm their, their desire to have standard parking spaces to reduce the aisle by two feet to 23 feet aisle width. And while it, it, it did yield the loss of seven spaces, so the, the request from 2.01 is now down to 1.97. As a result of, of that and as a result of just the additional information, we do have updates to the draft findings, including a revised finding for the variance on the setback issue because now we have confirmation on that, that, in staff's estimation, we believe it is the minimum necessary to accomplish that. We made reference changes to the percent changes for the variance on the parking changes and the site development review. And the, the additional item which also came up is that we are asking the applicant to consider improved landscaping possibilities at the northwest corner of the property, in which case there are concerns about utility installations, whether or not those utility lines can be adjusted accordingly. As a result of the information that we've collected on your behalf, nothing has changed our recommendation for conditional approval, and we would request that the findings as amended would be considered for adoption. Before I turn it back over to the Planning Commission for questions, I do want to briefly show you the parking situation table for the record. It is in your attachment. And the important highlight columns are the two highlighted ones there on the right side of the table where we show the spaces provided per unit, basically what was approved for the application. Then our observation in the second to last column which shows observed unused spaces on a typical weeknight at a nine o'clock hour. And then basically a calculation of the space utilization, spaces used per unit. Now, a couple of things do stand out. One is there is a little bit of an outlier with Hampton Heights. Some of you know that that is the complex there on 257th, on the downhill, on the northbound lane of 257th. We know just anecdotally, historically, that complex has helped arrange housing for pilots and in training down at the airport. And a number of those pilots don't drive vehicles. So that, that could skew it and we fully acknowledge that. But if you look at some of the other comparators that we have, they are still well below the suggested parking. And the other thing we would mention too is Halsey Heights, which is just down the street to the east of this site. In 1999, requested a 19.3% variance to their facility, which brought it down to 1.88, and their space utilization was 1.22 units. So I think what, what the question the, the Commission needs to ask, because I know that might be a concern, is, you know, is this too much of an ask, or are the applicants asking for too much of a break? I think the question should also enter the Commission's mind that says, is the standard that we are requiring applicants to meet, is it too excessive? Because the math seems to suggest that. And while we're not here to talk about a text amendment tonight, our research and evidence suggests that you probably need to look at that section because it is causing a situation of inefficient land use. And we believe as a staff that a, going from a 2.33 standard to allowing a 1.97 standard is not going to cause irreparable harm to the surrounding areas because none of the other apartment complexes are demonstrating that same effect, including the one that did receive a major concession in parking 22 years ago with the same standard in place. So with that, that completes the staff update. And again, we do have revised findings for you, and when you are ready to consider making motions, we have that slide from two weeks ago. That will work you through the sequencing and the language of it should you choose to make a decision tonight.
Okay. Okay, any questions on the information?
I have a question.
Commissioner Prickett?
Um, why wasn't Mountain Meadows included in that? It's on 257th and Hinsley.
The referenced, the referenced apartment complexes that we looked at were the ones that were called out by name, which were the four proximate ones to the site and Eagle Ridge. We didn't do a full evaluation of every, every apartment complex in that field.
I was asking, I should have asked that one, but the only reason I'm asking that is that Hinsley is, has that apartment complex, has cars parked along Hinsley. They are from those apartments and not from the housing complex across the street. So, I mean, not, that, that's here nor there though. That's, that was my question. I should have asked you to look into that and I apologize for that.
No, it's okay. I mean, we can always do that analysis at another time for another application.
Right.
I actually did ask for Mountain Meadows in an email to Chris.
Mr. Chair, a question if I may. This is directed to the Director, of course, to be sure that I understand, understand completely what this new proposal is. Chris, if I understand correctly, your statement in collaboration with the applicant, we are, the staff is proposing tonight to change all the compact parking to standard parking. And that would extended the parking space by two feet. In, in, in summary, reduce the total amount of proposed parking by an extra five. So from 384 originally necessary by standard, whatever the standard might, might be, came down to 334. Now we reduce another five because all of them are extended normal regular parking space, it is no compact. So we're going down to 329, which is a total net reduction of 15% to the original standard of 3.23. Am I correct?
Generally correct. I'm not sure about the figures exactly that you were referencing, but the, 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 basically by, by, the conversation that was had at the last meeting was our observations of, of apartment complexes that show compact spaces, they largely go unused. And that, that has been the experience there. So the question for them was, could they convert? They, they showed the exhibit to do it, it does reduce it further. So it doesn't, they were going to need the, the variance anyway to reduce the parking. This just slightly increases the degree of the variance.
Okay, Chris, if, if I may, and I don't mean to interject you, but let's try to, for my benefit, but also for everybody's benefit, to remove ourselves from innuendo and speculation, you know, the standard of people don't use the compact. It might be true, we don't know. Maybe the calculation was done because somebody suggested it when the apartment was empty. So I want to remove from, from innuendo and speculation. Let's, let's go to the number. This, the current number, the current standard require 2.33 parking per unit. Am I correct?
Correct, that's correct.
And there was the requirement. At the old, at the meeting of August 11th, the proposal, because in, introduces, introduced some compact parking was to go down to 334. Now, I understand, correct? Because a lot of the number that I heard, you know.
Correct, yep.
So now if I understand correctly, that's why I want to be sure I understand correctly before I lend my brain to and, and speak. Again, as I said before, I like to know what I'm talking about when I talk about something. Now we are proposed to change all the compact to standard normal, which brings an extra, an extra reduction of an extra five parking spaces. So from 334, we bring to 329.
Uh, it is...
Which mathematically is exactly 10% discount. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. I, I think the figure we're working at, unless it was referenced elsewhere, I think 327 is the figure.
Okay.
And, and as a clarification though, it is not all the compact parking. What it is, is a row of compact parking on the southern side of the property, which was shown all compact. The reason we needed that clarification from them was they were seeking also a variance to the park, uh, to the setback standard on the southern property line. And staff could not make a finding with their proposal because they had the possibility of either shifting the asphalt two feet further in to allow for, to reduce the degree of that, that variance. Or if they had an option, would they rather just increase to normal parking stalls with understanding that increases the degree of the variance on the total number of spaces? They provided an exhibit that does the second thing, that it increases the size of the spaces, meaning more vehicles are probably able to comfortably use the parking space on that southern row. It doesn't change therefore significantly the, the, the amount of lands lost on the, on the south side. Uh, but what it does do is because a standard space is wider than a compact space, you do lose several spaces.
Okay, but...
So, so you're still around two spaces a unit is, is basically what the variance is. It's 1.97.
Again, I want to, I want to try to remove myself for a second for the variance. I want to try to understand what, what's happening here because I'm still unclear. So there are no, the applicant is not proposing to change all the compact spaces to normal spaces, just the one on the southern border, south of the apartment building, unit I and H?
I believe that's correct. I don't have the exhibit here immediately in front of me, but...
Okay, so the one...
I and H, correct.
So the, the few one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, 10, 10 that are north of unit E and D are still going to stay compact?
Correct.
And the one northern of the unit C is still going to be compact?
Um, catching up with you first, but give me one moment, but I believe that's correct.
Okay, okay, got it. And with this number, still remaining those compact where we say north of unit E and D and north of unit C, we go down to 329 or 327, to, to more or less. So we have really, at this point, the applicant is requesting a 15% deviation from standard. Okay, good, thank you very much, just to understand. Thank you, appreciate it.
This is Commissioner Allen.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Allen.
Hi, um, so I'm actually in, in favor of the applicant's suggestion on the compact parking. And I'm just clarifying that point because I'm going to make a comment on the parking situation table. It's nice to have on, on the table as a footnote what the data actually represents for future reference. Uh, so spaces used per unit as to, you know, this was observed during a weekday around this time, that sort of thing, as opposed to a more scientific method. It's just a suggestion for future tables. Is that understandable what I'm saying? It's, it's nice to know what the data actually represents by having it as a note similar to what you see with the asterisks and the double asterisks.
Meaning, meaning kind of the, the, the title, like what, what the column titles are explaining that further out, if I'm understanding correctly?
The methodology used to come up with the spaces used per unit.
Oh, that's fair, yeah.
So, so the data is understandable for the future.
Junior parking study done at whatever day and time.
Completely fair, that, that can be noted. I mean, this, this table can be used for other purposes, of course, too, downwind, so we can make that adjustment for any future use.
Okay, I, I just imagine that the, from personal experience, that the parking varies depending on time and season. And so just noting what the data actually represents is useful.
Of course.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and my apologies, I know I come, having missed the previous meeting, but this is just a consideration we would like to make for myself, but also for my colleagues. Because having maybe been a little more emotionally moved as, unlike you were two weeks ago by watching the comfort of my room with no pressure, I started to review the, the, the presentation a different, in a different way. And I think that if, if there is a concern, and maybe it's too strong of a word, but it is a concern nevertheless, is that the issues to these three variances that the applicant has proposed and, and the council, I'm sorry, the council, the Planning Commission discussing, discussed a lot. It seems to me that has obscured and eclipsed the issue that is much more relevant than the three variables, which is the issue of good design for a subdivision, for, for development of this scale. And, and, and while the, the, the variables are relevant in some respect, parking, residential parking of 15% of the scale is, is acceptable, some codes accepted by default immediately. But, but my concern is that the conversation of the Commissioner and all the witnesses us focused and crystallized solely on, on these three variables. And I think that issue is much, much bigger. When I look at physical design, I think we should have a conversation about, can we do this better? When I look at the location of open spaces, children's spaces that are located picnic park, barbecue area, open space, that are located between two parking spaces, bumper to bumper with the two car. I, I wonder if this is the best optimal solution. Once we do a development of this, of this size, well, we, we talk about good element of urban design. We talk about good element of architecture, we talk about highs in the community, the open space. And here we seem to reject everything. So it might be too late, but I think I, I would be remiss if I don't voice this because the entire conversation for this case has been focusing, crystallizing, which has really has eclipsed anything else. And to me, everything else is much more relevant than our variance about parking law 384 or 351, compact or not. Building I 39, 37. I have serious doubts about the quality of this, of this subdivision on a, on a, on a site plan. I have extensive question for the applicant when I look at, when I look at, at rendering the shows a flat roof and when I look at elevation of the show gable roofs. When I, so this is to me a much more relevant because the parking, again, some, some codes allow by default, by media request, an automatic 15% discount. But a design of this size, 166 units, one, two, three bedroom. And we are, we are start to create an, an, an urban fabric that is really this incentive for really communal living. When you create an, an open space, children's space barbecue area, which is locked, covered, protected by two row of parking space automobile, then you really do not think about it. I think we can do better than that. I think we should do better than that. I think this requires some conversation, extensive conversation about, I understand you're trying to maximize the unit and we may also need it, but, but good physical design is no more expensive than bad physical design. It just demand more time and the attention of people there. So if I may be this forward, I could suggest, I would suggest some prudence and a conservative approach and some caution to my colleague about minimize the entire application, which is an extensive application to three variances and focus just on that. Because it, it is, it really, the variance really in some respect, and my apologies, I, I talk in a, a curveball this year, but it's very relevant. The rest is more important. Also, while, while I'm willing to get along with my colleagues, I don't see anything wrong in minimizing and accept the variance basing on good fundamental sound reasoning. I have some concern and I do not like to change the code. If, if, if we feel that the standard is too strict of the code in the specific case for parking, then there is a, there is an appropriate time and appropriate... then there is a, there is an appropriate time and appropriate protocol to, to, to approach that. I don't think that in the middle of public hearing, uh, we should start to talk, discuss about. If we find there is a rationale to accept the variance, then by all means, we do accept the variance and I'm willing to, to accept the variance. Uh, but, but I think the physical design is what gives me some discomfort, if I could say, use a new fitness. And so I would like my colleagues on time also to approach this issue because once you start to look really at that development, I, I don't know if it incites your communal life. You know, people were talking about livability, I, I have probably comments about livability. Well, let's talk about livability. Would, I, I think the litmus test is would the, would the community development director live there? Would the chair would there, would I live there? I'm not quite sure. Again, I think we can do better and this is on, on all of us, it's not just on the staff reviewing the stuff. This was an automatic, actually, as you say many times, Mr. Chair, this did not demand to come as a public hearing. This was an automatic administrative review, but since we're here and since we have this conversation, well, let's have this conversation and, and not just minimizing and crystallizing on three variances. And then, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else before, do you want me to respond to that first?
Uh, this is Commissioner Wilcox.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wilcox.
Thank you, Chair Stephenson. Since Commissioner Mamonie raised the issue of the, uh, standard versus compact spaces, I had a comment on some of the red line language that was added to, uh, the, the parking, uh, adjustment. Uh, I'm just gonna quote a line that, uh, I'm referring to. Based on observations from other multifamily developments, the planning commission determined that compact spaces would not adequately serve the property. I don't remember the planning commission actually making that recommendation. And, uh, you know, the, the variance is already starting out, uh, with a forty space deficit. So now we're at forty-seven spaces below the standard. And I have, uh, some additional random comments on the, the whole parking standard that I can address later, if you'd prefer.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Okay, uh, yeah, I, I, I would agree, I think we're a little focused on parking, but we're not, we're not completely focused on parking because we not only have a variance for parking, we have variance from the setback and we have a height variance too. So I think those are all factors that play into it. I was gonna say, I think as far as layout, can we make recommendations only? I don't think we can make conditions for that.
No, I mean, you, you run a very tricky slope there because you do not have site performance standards for multifamily design standards. In other words, the design standards where you can push and pull are building focused and not site focused.
Right.
And you have frankly a proposal that apart from the variances meets the, the minimum criteria in the code, you could offer and, and, and cajole and suggest.
As a suggestion.
As a suggestion, sure.
But not a condition.
But you would be hard pressed to be able to send that as a condition. Uh, and staff would have a hard time being able to uphold it because in whose eyes would be holder might that be? You don't have a clear and objective standard, in other words. I, I don't, I don't, and for the record, staff doesn't disagree with the, the larger philosophy that this, that Commissioner Mamonie is, is putting forth. But at the same rate, we have an obligation to forward an application that, that fits the boxes and for the ones that, that haven't been fixed, uh, this is why you're here tonight.
Right. And I was gonna say, I don't think we're looking at adjusting the parking code at this time or at this hearing. That would be something that we would do, um, later. I think this is very helpful information, but this is a junior parking study, uh, not something that would, you know, compel me to change the standard, um, going forward. So I think we would need more information, but certainly this does bring up some, some interesting things. And, you know, you don't know, I mean, it's really tough because if you don't have enough parking, it's really hard to put it in. And if you have too much, it's really hard to take it out.
So Mr. Chair Stephnay, what type of parking study are you, is this commission looking for? Because if, if, if the commission is going to be asking for this type of information, it's only fair for staff to communicate that expectation to the applicant prior to a submission of an application.
Well, I, I'm saying, this is in regards to us. I thought Commissioner Mamonie suggested that we were looking at changing the code based on this information.
Well, I mean, it could maybe used to be, to spark that change, but that's obviously not what you're doing tonight.
Right.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make.
And that's what I'm saying.
Got it.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, again, this is just a clarification, this is what I enjoy of this opportunity. It's every, really a candid, civic conversation, a robust conversation. Uh, and so this is, my point is not to have a debate, my point is not to prove anybody wrong. My point is I to open window of opportunity and make myself also a little bit clearer. But, um, you know, I'm not familiar with, with the code of the city of Trabdale as the directory is, of course. But I'm familiar with our code and, and so, uh, there is always an opportunity to, if, if no by imposing condition on a level of physical design, there's an opportunity by the political swagger that they're got, that the, the, the committee carries itself to, because the, the committee also has the ability to be a committee of compassion, uh, to really have a marketing transaction with the applicant. We are gonna be more lenient here with the variances, but we demand something better there. Uh, and my experience with, with city of much larger population, much more complex development, it's no similar complex, living in the front line, just like director suggests that this is a tool that is used when, when the develop, when the planning commission or design commission or city council, uh, feels that there is something missing, there is the opportunity to slow down the tempo and to ask for improvement. These are no condition, of course, and because again, I don't know the code very well, uh, as, as Chris does. But, but I, I would like to suggest that we suspend this too strong, but then we start to also view other part of this development and not just through the lenses of three variances. You know, the other question that I have is, and I couldn't figure out from the study of Kiddles and Associates, the only entrance through this development, the three entrances of Southwest Alsey Loop are coming from intersection through Southwest Alsey Street and Southwest Alsey Loop. I don't see, unless I missed it, a new signalized top there to, to access. They, they talk about not being able to, uh, to do, uh, the acceleration lane right now because it will be too much. They're gonna put some money in view for it, eventually they're on. So what exactly happened? Because that intersection, since, since the one out of Southwest Sixth Way and Southwest Sixth Circle are just for emergency, then that intersection on Alsey Street and Alsey Loop is the only access to a one hundred sixty-six unit development. And we figure out what's going on there, I don't, did not see a stop light. I, I saw just maneuvering lane that actually are not even proposed because they will be required right away from the north development, which according to the study of Kiddles and Associates says isn't, isn't appropriate to demand at this time, even because it's basic supported by also by the traffic increase ADT from twenty-four. So we're just gonna put money in view. So these are important questions. It's not the variance, I would like again to suggest some prudence here and remove for a second, if we can, from these variances. And in a matter, because the variance is really is a technicality. You don't meet the test, it doesn't meet the test. But these other one are intangible, that are much more relevant.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Wittr.
Chris, can you give me a refresher on how many developers have tried to develop this land and have not been successful, please?
Um, I can only speak to how long, uh, the, the current staff's been here, which is basically six years as of next week. We've had three pre-application attempts. There probably have been a, close to a half dozen informal napkin drawings, for lack of a better word, that never made it to a pre-application stage. And, and the, the anecdotal reasons, never official reasons per se, but the anecdotal reasons those other op, uh, opportunities did not pan out when we asked why not, was largely driven by the parking standard, but also some challenges on utilities, particularly on water pressure, and frankly, the inability to potentially go higher to do a three and a half story type solution such as the, the applicant here is proposing.
Okay.
So three, three officials and probably about a half dozen unofficial. And, and a couple of the half dozen unofficial were from the same party, just looking at the site differently. The other thing, and I forgot to mention, Commissioner Wittr, until a year and a half ago, direct access onto Halsey Loop was not allowed because there was a spike strip from the property to the east. So they would have had to take access exclusively from Halsey Street, which led to a really bad layout, not to mention even more significant traffic concerns than maybe the ones that could be contemplated tonight.
Okay. And then I'd also like to chime in behind Commissioner Wilcox's comments because I had, I believe I had also made the suggestion on that south strip of parking to make a combination of full parking and compact parking. As I believe the gist was, we were all pretty, um, we, we knew some full parking had to be in there, but maybe we don't need to lose all the spaces because we know some compact parking will work as well. It just doesn't have to be all one or all the other. We can do a combination and still pick up a few more spaces.
Right, and that could be a commit, a condition of approval that you, you insert basically, that you, you, you do that.
Yep, that's all I have, Tim. If I may, uh, I, I concur with Commissioner Wittr and I think a combination of compact and standard is very appropriate because, yes, I keep hearing, you know, through the videos and through the comments and stuff from public, people don't use compact. It might be true. And again, we are, we are making assumptions, speculating, but there are no use compact until there are no parking. Then, trust me, the compact parking is worked very, very well, there is no other alternative. So if you're sure. And one, and, and I, and I mean it, Mr. Chair, this is my last comment for quite some time now. In spite of my comment, in spite of my questioning, I am actually in favor of development of, on this location. Uh, I don't think I like some of the comments that were from the public on the, over the, the two weeks ago, that this is an excessive development. I think it, it, it is not overly sized. Uh, I don't, I don't think, uh, started, we are becoming a community of, uh, one, two, three multifamily apartment complex for rent. I think the size is very small, I think it's a perfect size. But it demands, uh, and on our responsibility to solve this kind of outstanding issue, like the access, like the parking, like the social lives of the space. Again, I, I'm in favor, but, but I, I think we can do better than what I saw the proposal right now. And again, there are questions, as I said before, uh, I'm, I'm not quite sure unless you are. Some elevation and, and the shows, uh, gable roofs and some rendering flat, flat roof. We talk about some of the garage, in a total, I see a garage, but I listed at least four different sizes of garages. Some are double, some are single, some are one and a half. So there's a bunch of question, I think, that need to be answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. The garages aren't one for one, I think they are, I think.
I'm sorry, can you do?
Garage is counted as one, correct?
Uh, the graphic doesn't shows that. The graphic on A one or two shows some are actually double, uh, with fence in the middle, some is one and a half, ISOs, and some are actually like compact, much shorter. When you look on, on building I and H, um, of the corner lots, uh, the unit, the hands, these are at least two feet long, so short. So can you park a car, is that for storage? I don't know, there's no dimension. But it's all this graphic, if the graphic means anything, and if anything presented from the commission is supposed to be true, then we have issue, I mean, we have issue, we have question. South of the, the building on unit C, uh, the two corner garages are much, much shorter.
CD.
Building I, building H, um, building B, all of them. So at least four different parking.
Uh, Mr. Mamonie, I would, I would remind you that the, the architect in the last hearing was asked about that and I believe they confirmed those dimensions at the last hearing and they were sufficient. I don't.
Chris, I understand, but again, I, I have, I'm reviewing what they submitted. And if you look at the graphic, it, it is undeniable, unequivocable. The two corner and every, and that's why I color coded it, because different dimension and different sizes. Some are double, some are single, some are one and a half, and the corner are much shorter, again. So they can say whatever they want, but if they submit document, whatever presented to the planning commission supposed to be meant, because that's what we base our reasoning.
Chris, if I remember correctly, did not the applicant say that they were all counted as one regardless of some of them being oversized? And the minimum, even though they look smaller, was actually bigger than standard that they have on other properties? So none of the doubles were counted as two, they were all counted as one, if I remember correctly. And the smaller garages were singles, but they were still good size. He, he, if I remember correctly, did explain that pretty well.
Great, thank you very much. And what about the shorter one? There was a comment about the shorter one?
The shorter garage?
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think even the shorter ones were longer than a standard garage.
That's, that's correct, yeah. Uh, the architect made mention of, of that and explained that.
Great, thank you very much, thank you.
All right. Seems you're focused a lot on parking. You had some information on existing apartment buildings and the number of spots that they have for parking and how many were vacant, what percentage?
On, on which?
How many of the parking areas and other apartment structures were not used?
In which particular complex this way, oh, I'm sorry.
You mentioned at the last meeting that there were certain ten to fifteen percent of the parking spaces that, that were open and not used.
Uh, we, we made specific, uh, example of Eagle Ridge, which is also on the table. That's the one that was just built up by, uh, two forty second and Sherri Park. And, uh, it was the, 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 the observed emptiness of that area was largely compact spaces. Most of the compacts were, were empty, but the, you took the entire side, I think we, we had it with sixty, one moment, sorry. Sixty-four percent of, no, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong column here. Was roughly sixty-six, sixty-seven percent of the spaces were occupied, so thirty-three percent empty. And they were a hundred percent, um, full as far as occupied units. Um, if, if, Mr. Chair, we did get some additional information and thank you, Inver, for helping to put it together. In regards to the Mountain Meadows, the complex, um, about, they have a total of a hundred and sixty-four units. So as far as the unit count, I don't think we have a division of one, two, three bedrooms. But, um, they had, um, three hundred and thirty spaces, of which a hundred and fifteen are compact and eighty-four were garages. So if you have residents that choose not to pay more to get a garage and, you know, a third of your spaces are compact, yeah, you might have some, some overfill in that situation. But I would also add that there's nothing that precludes a resident from legally parking on a city street if there's on-street parking available.
Right, and how many units?
Hundred and sixty-four. But again, we don't have a breakdown of one, two and three bedrooms at this point.
That's three hundred and thirty for a hundred and sixty-four units.
This is, yeah, it's, it's, it's roughly two, two per.
Yeah.
But we haven't studied it in the same way and I apologize if we misunderstood because we thought we were under the impression that we were studying someone around. that we were studying someone around the subject property in addition to that.
Okay. Okay. What should I do? Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay, so we've gone to know our loss was because we got rid of all the compacts.
On the south, on the southerly compact strip.
Yeah.
You still have compacts elsewhere. And as I think Mr. Wilcox mentions, you could have put in a condition that re-put in some of them if that yields you minus five or minus four as opposed to minus seven, minus three, whatever it might be. Or you could say, doesn't work for us, leave the compact in and move your southerly asphalt line two feet in. So, you still have a 23-foot wide aisle. You maintain the compact, but then they have demonstrated that the minimum setback need has been basically wrong. They only need them like a one-foot setback adjustment as opposed to a three-foot, which is what they're requesting now.
Okay, so our setback would go from one foot to three feet?
It brings you closer to the 15.
Well, from three feet to one foot, sorry.
Effectively, that's round numbers, but it's closer. But I think we were trying to make the argument as a staff in the report that says you have parking against parking on the southerly area. You have same land uses, and setbacks truly are meant for buildings. These are ground-based treatments. Nor did we have a complaint from the Southern Property Management Group who was notified in support of this application, saying that it had a problem, so...
No, I think the only complaint we had was someone to the west.
Northwest.
Yeah, of the project. I think that's where the complaint came from, as far as being...
Essentially.
Close.
But that's within the standard setback of the site. And she shares the same zoning district as this applicant does, too.
Same one?
They have the same zoning district. Both properties are zoned A2, hers and the subject property.
Okay. So, three foot to one foot, and we would retain the compact.
Well, you're saying if you wanted to maintain the compact and then leave the original proposal, which was the 334 total spaces as opposed to 327, which was the revised figures, once they did that analogy? If you wanted to just have them convert a couple of them and still retain some standard ones, then just leave the variance alone and then they just update their site plan accordingly, and it's just a condition of approval.
Okay. All right. Thoughts on that, Chris?
Just a reminder to the group where that southern parking spaces was going parking to parking on the other side with the neighbors, correct? Chris, so it's parking and parking, it's not structure and structure.
Right.
And I guess I would just say I'm still kind of proponent of having a mixture of both.
Okay. Mr. Pritchett? You're absolutely quiet.
I agree with Mr. Mamon. We should be more... Again, I agree with what your concept is, and be more aware of how livable these apartments are going to be for these residents that are going to occupy them. But we also have to look at the bigger picture of the... To me, it takes away the small-town feel when you start putting in... And I know it's zoned for this, but I think we could do better, like Mr. Mamon said. I think we could do better. I think we're given too many variances for one project.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair, if I may, since Commissioner Pritchett already spoke in that direction, this is not just volume. I'm not trying to convince anybody. I'm just... Would like for my benefit to move the conversation a different direction. When I look, my concern, again, I have nothing against a development of this size, and nothing against the size of this size in that specific logistics. We are not going to compromise the look of the feeling of the city. But there are concerns about a physical design. And so, when I look at the access, there are question. Intersection of Southwest Halsey Street and Southwest Loop, there is no answer. At least, I don't have a good answer. Buffering and screening, there was an extensive buffering and screening along the western edge to the single-family residential. We see some landscape planning, but nothing very clear. I would love to see a clear representation or clear schedule was his plan, was his... And also, maybe a rendering of what this is going to be, look like, also for a sound. I don't know, I don't... Didn't know, maybe, and my apologies, maybe I'm skipping something. But again, there is a development of 166 units. We are talking about incentive for different way of circulation. I don't see anything go bicycle parking, long-term, short-term. I don't see about... I'm very much concerned about building placement, the way it is, about, I don't know if our code approaches a percentage of open space, children area by the size of the development, maybe by the number of units, maybe by the square footage. So, I don't see that. I'm very much concerned also about... Intangible, but even more relevant than the variance. I see two trash enclosure on a development of 166 unit. On the opposite hand, which means maybe if you live on the Unit H, on the eastern end of the Unit H, you had to run around 50 parking spaces to the west to find it. And we don't even know if there are size appropriately. We don't even know unless we have a relationship with this management, as we do at the City of Gresham, where they talk to us about the radius of the track, if they're front-loaded or side-loaded, and what is the size? If you can't pull wheel out, we don't even know if it's going to be enough for 166 units. So, these are really relevant question, much more than the variance. This is the art and soul of a development. We put people to live there. And I think that's why, again, I would like to suggest some caution, some... Slow down the tempo. Because these are really, this is the art and soul of development. Outside, again, of the physical representation. One time I see flat roof, one time I see gable roof. I don't know the material. This is important. Parking, again, is a variance, a technicality. You need the test, you don't need the test. But this question, to me, is hard question. I've no been asked, or at least not in a way that is successful for us, proponent of, where we always talk about the feeling of the community in the City of Trudale and the sense of community. And then, again, and I'm not going to use a euphemism here, and I'm not going to use aprobodic language here, I think we can do better. But it demands time and amount of review. And again, I'm not against the development. I'm not against this development. I'm just thinking we can do better.
Okay, so I guess my... The road's controlled by the county. And so, we submit the application to the county and ask for comments, and this is what we got back. So, these are the conditions that we put in. We submitted to Gresham Fire, we submitted to Public Works. Everyone puts their conditions in, and those are things where we're required to uphold those conditions. And we can add a condition, correct? Not to theirs, but we can add a general condition if we choose to.
Mr. Chair, we have the authority to deny this application in spite of all the conditions, and say, we want to... We go to... We deny this and go to appeal to the City Council, but we deny it unless it's done in a better way. There is our prerogative as well.
If you wish to deny it, remember you'll have to adopt a finding as to the reason as to why you're denying it. The concern that staff would offer as caution for you all, as many of you have made very impassioned testimonies about how you may feel about the layout.
Sure, sure. But you deny the... You deny the three variances, you deny the application.
We're just saying that we don't have the potential oversight as a staff, or frankly, as a city, even if the city, even if you folks wanted to be involved. The existing code does not afford a way to demand design excellence to whoever's standard.
Chris, I'm perplexed, because, again, this was an application that did no need even to come in front of the planning commission. And for whatever rationale, which is not the time right now to discuss, we brought it in front of the public as a public hearing. It did no need to come here. But so, now, this application did not even need to come in front of the public in a public hearing, by code. So, for whatever... Again, so for whatever rationale, that I'm not going to debate right now, because I know the appropriate time, we brought it in front of the planning commission. So, by bringing it in front of the planning commission and by having the planning commission, the body with jurisdiction on the application, because it's going to be appealed to the council if it is appealed, then the planning commission has the authority and the latitude to say, we are not going to go this way. And again, by just... Just by even... Denied three variances, we kill the development. At least this development, this quality development, and that's what I'm talking about. And again, I would like just to have some answer where we can have a conversation with the applicant. Again, the applicant has the only latitude, if I understand correctly, by our code, to demand an extension, 120 days. And I know the applicant is talking about interest rate, very low, and whatever, but I don't want pressure on myself or on the planning commission and thus the integrity of the organization because somebody's pressuring me about a 3% interest rate. This is to me, personally. And then, again, there is a majority. This is not what the City of Trudale should welcome on itself. And so, I think we can do better. I think we should asking to postpone 120 days, sit down at a table, and have a better conversation. And if the conversation even request, again, variances, so be it. Because, again, I don't have any problem about the variances, actually. I have problem about developing something like this which becomes the benchmark for our development. Because once you introduce something like this, there's no way to go back. You trace the land in the sand. And we can use all the beautiful words about the sense of community and the one-story high, but in the end, that's what we allow. And again, I'm not upset. This is not a debate. I don't want an answer, a technical answer. This is my, picking my mind right now as a commissioner. And I think, while I don't want to debate, I want a robust conversation. And if you bring a rationale, I'm just as good as the data. I'm willing to change my mind. But right now, from what I can see, when I'm a planner right now, this is Gresham. When I was a director in Ontario, Oregon, or Caldwell-Lloyd, or when I was a city manager, I would not have wanted something like this. Again, nothing wrong with the development, nothing wrong with the location, nothing wrong with the size, it's just the way it's executed. And that is my concern. And that's where I would like the conversation to go. And that's what I questioned from the beginning. Let's for a second remove the glasses, the lenses of free variances. The free variances are obscuring and eclipsing everything else. And somehow, we don't able to see what the development is because we are focusing on compact number of discounted parking of 15% or 10% or 6%. Again, I'm one person, of course. And if the vote is 6 to 1, I'm getting along. This is what it's all about, being part of the community, being part of the committee. And sometime, you get your way, sometime you don't. There's no animosity whatsoever. But really, again, I would like to ask for some causes, some prudence here about this. Thank you, my apologies again.
Okay, thank you. A couple of things. One, we spent a number of hours on this, and we didn't talk about parking the entire time. I think a lot of people spent a lot of time going through the application, looking at it, and I don't think it was just strictly about parking spaces. There was a lot of testimony, not all of it was about parking. So, we haven't totally focused on parking. And I guess the question I would have for the commission is, if you wish to deny the variances, which variance criteria are we using to deny the variances? Because that's what we need to do at this time. If we're going to do that, we have to write a finding for denying the variance based on the criteria that's given.
Right, at the same... Or the site development review criteria as well, because that's also applicable. Now, it only takes one denial of a criterion to deny the application. At the same rate, what is the evidence that the commission is going to be standing on to write that finding? And that would be the staff caution to you that if that's the direction the commission wants to go, that's fine, but you'll need to have something to reference as a part of the robust discussion, or whatever it may be. We're just saying, as a staff, tread very carefully if that's the route you want to go, and that is entirely your right.
Based on a variance?
Well, or on, frankly, any of the portions of the public component of the application. I would also add, too, again, the applicant reserves the right to withdraw the application at any time during the proceeding. So, if there's a desire from their end to go back to the proverbial drawing board, they're right to request that at any moment.
Mr. Chair, again, I think from a technical level... And Chris, again, we work together and appreciate very much everything. If we find ourselves in time in different situations, doesn't matter. But in the end, you submit that information to us, we make a judgment call. I think we have all the latitude and the technical reasoning to deny a variance on the parking. Because all I read on the minutes, and all I watched in the video was that this anecdotal data that, according to our informal investigation and to the development in the past, like Eagle Ridge, compact parking spaces tend to go unused and avoided. Well, this is not a rationale to grant a variance. So, already on that, that variance technically is gone. On a technicality, really, or a language, technical language is not supported by any number, by any standard, unless the code tells you as an administrator, but you have the ability, the authority, as some codes do, to void 50%. But you relinquish that once you brought it in front of the public commission, once you brought it in front of the planning commission, because now the jurisdiction is our. And so, you can assume that the code gave you a latitude, it's not there anymore. And so, once the variance is based on anecdotal data, again, I'm quoting you as the director. According to our informal investigation, to the development in the past, example, like Eagle Ridge, compact parking spaces tend to go unused and avoid it. That's why we can avoid it. Then, you have all the legal rationale to say, no, that's good of variance. Until and unless all the other issues that are more relevant are resolved. And again, I'm not against this development. I'm not against the location. I just want it to be done right. And this is my personal... Then the vote might be 6 to 1, but...
Anyone else?
This is Commissioner Allen.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Allen.
Hey, Chris, can you remind me, how many compact spaces are there in this development?
Give me one moment, Mr. Wilcox, we'll find that number for you.
That's Allen, actually.
Mr. Allen, excuse me.
I think Wilcox is coming up.
Commissioner Allen, we'll get that number for you. Would we be okay to go to Commissioner Wilcox, just till we... We time up?
I guess.
Okay, Commissioner Wilcox?
Okay, thank you, Chair Stavenson. I'll weigh in on my issues with parking. Just go down my random list here of issues. Last meeting, I... into the actual units underneath the apartments. Two issues I have with garages. Number one, the tenant has to be willing to pay extra for the garage space. They're, I researched a couple of their other developments. They're charging 135 in Gresham and 160 at one of the Happy Valley developments and the other Happy Valley I couldn't find information on. In comparison, I also raised the issue of, you know, somebody, a parking space, isn't a parking space in a garage unless someone pays extra for it, number one. And number two, that parking space could be used for storage rather than parking a car. So I did a comparison with, with local cell storage businesses are charging for, for a 10 by 20 space, the fee is between 250 and $300 a month. So, so that would be a pretty, pretty strong incentive for somebody to, you know, if they needed the space for storage to leave their car outside and, you know, use, use the garage strictly for parking. I mean, I see a lot of that in our development and in our single-family development. Another item I had was using Eagle Ridge as a comparator development. An issue, a difference I saw with them is that they're directly across the street from Gresham's Vista Industrial Park. And there are a lot of, and that's a major employment center. You know, it's, it's no Amazon, but I'm sure when that's fully built out, there'll be several hundred, if not more, jobs in there. So there could be people, you know, I'm, I'm not saying one way or the other, but there could be people living in Eagle Ridge that could walk to work from there. And you don't have that, you don't have a major employer like that on Halsey. There's a statistic presented by staff about national standards of how many cars people in apartment complexes have, and it was less than, you know, less than two. What I've seen in our neighborhood anyway, is there are people bringing their work trucks home or work cars. So they might have two pers, two or three personal cars. I've seen as many as six personal cars in a single residence. Plus they're bringing their work vans home, parking them on the street, parking them in their driveway. So, you know, that, that cuts into your parking, kind of skews that parking claim that, you know, people have less than, than two spaces per unit. One other item, I think my final item was most of staff's arguments in favor of the variance seem to be that the current Troutdale standard of 2.33 is excessive. And I think it's really bad policy to be addressing that by exception. You know, if the, if the standard is excessive, the, the standard needs to be adjusted, it shouldn't be, you know, changed to suit someone else, you know, because it's, you know, considered excessive. And as far as this development goes, I also raised the issue last meeting of they're, they're not at minimum density, they're at 166 minimum density, it's, which would be 90%, minimum density would be 148. So they actually have enough parking spaces at minimum density. So, you know, bottom line, they do have enough parking, they just have too many units for the parking that's available. That's, I think I pretty much covered parking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilcox. Did you have an answer for Commissioner Allen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for, Amber again, for pulling up the statistics. The, the, the initial proposal for this, this presumed, the compact all the way on the south side were 205 standard, 81 compact, 48 garages, which your closest, I guess, u-using the mountain, um, the, uh, the apartment complex over off, off Henley. Again, for comparison, you had 124 regular, 115 compact, 84 garage. So there's more surface parking even before this change. Now, if with the updated exhibit that was in your, your packet, if that change gets made, then the, the, the ratio turns into this, 260 standard spaces, 26 compact spaces, 48 garages. Meaning compact spaces are less than 10% of the overall site parking and garage parking is only at about, this is a rough estimate, so it's about 13 or 14% of the total parking allotment, whereas compared to the, the apartment complex off Henley, garage is counted as almost 25% of the parking allocation there. So the staff position on that does not change. In fact, I would argue it's further budgeted, but we're not the decider here.
I, I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Commissioner Allen.
Oh, I, I appreciate that. Thank you for looking that up. It doesn't sound to me like there's a shortage of compact spaces either way we go. Uh, I, I point that out. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm looking at the number provided here and if we switch from compact to standard, it's a difference of seven parking spaces? That doesn't make sense.
We would have seven less parking spaces, right?
Right.
So we'd have 2% less. Yeah. If we got rid of the compacts.
It, it starts to become a value choice, I, I think, how useful a full space is versus a compact space. So it's really a preference there.
Question, the 14 spaces, they're on Halsey, correct?
Halsey Loop, off the side street.
Okay.
And that will come, they, they don't exist now, that comes through the half-street improvement they have to make to that road to bring it up to current city standard.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Chris, this is a question for you, just want to be sure understood correctly. Do I understand correctly that this application is removing 299 trees? Is, is that, is that the correct number?
I believe that, that is the correct number of reference, but there was an Arborist report that was included as well in the packet and presented at the last, at the last hearing. There's also a significant amount, at least the ones on the periphery of the western side of the property, there is an existing tree line that is largely being preserved, except for those portions where those connections with fifth and sixth would occur.
Okay, so the, the number is indeed correct, 299, 290, we are in that?
That's what the applicant reported, yes, sir.
Okay. Do we know how many the applicant is proposing to replant? How many?
There is a landscaping plan, and I think you had an earlier question or statement about percentage open space and percentage landscape. The applicant does meet the standard percentage required by code for landscaped area and also to prepare a landscaping plan that adequately addresses.
So I understand, meet the test, but do we know how many does a replant? Is there a number there that we know?
Yeah, there's exhibits, yeah. I mean, there's, there's duck firs being planted among maple trees, there, there are trees in consequence.
So he's removing ballpark 300 trees, how many is replanted?
We can find out that number for you, Mr. Ramone.
Thank you very much, yeah. Yeah, Chris, that would be nice to know again. If you meant to test me the test, but just to understand on a level of visual, you know, I don't know, I don't know, it goes very well if there is a requirement for caliper, given the caliber they're removing, given the nature of the trees, so, but also just on a level of 101, you know, regardless by the caliper replacement ratio, do we remove 300, do we plant 250, 255, 20, I don't know. Thank you, yeah. I, I don't need it now, it just would be nice to have it. So thank you.
They, we'll get that. And a number of the trees that are coming out are actually cottonwoods and those should probably be outlawed.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of input from commissioners and I'd like to hear responses from the applicant and the property owner.
If you're going to do that, then you would have to reopen the public comment.
I would. You guys okay with that?
Now, the, the, one, one option, if, if, if the commission's willing to entertain a five-minute recess, staff can consult with the applicant to determine what they perhaps like to do in response to this, since there's been a lot of testimony. Can, can we request a five-minute recess?
Um, we'll give you 10.
Okay.
Okay, so if everyone's okay with that, a 10-minute recess and we'll be back at 8:33.
All right, now we're back. Okay, we've been over here talking to you guys. Just thought you didn't care. And does anyone have any questions of staff at this time?
Nope.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, the applicants are still determining what they, how they want to proceed.
Okay.
We've given them a few options for what to do or what their rights are as an applicant, so we'll wait to hear from them.
Okay. All right.
While we wait, if I may, Mr. Chair, I do want to pull up the slide from last time, which spoke to the order of the motions, regardless of the outcome tonight or another night, the sequencing of the votes. It is important as far as how the application should be approvable or denied. You would want to start with the variance to the building height as your first option.
Okay.
The variance then to the setback standard and then the variance to the parking standard. And that's particular orders. The variant standard for the setback has to go first because that basically was determining how many spaces ultimately and to what degree would it be. And that's based on the finding that you make for the setback. If you are unable to agree on the parking variant standards, if you have a finding that says it was not met, then effectively the application as a whole is unable to be approved. So you can stop there. If, because then it basically causes a cascading effect on the other approvals.
Most likely though, the applicant would want to know what the outcome would be on the other one.
No, sure, I mean, but effectively that, if you're unable to agree to a variant on the parking, then therefore the site development review, the criteria wouldn't be met because the standards either as are or as modified through variants couldn't be met either. So it creates a little bit of a cascading effect.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes, Commissioner Wilcox.
Thank you. I was hearing some confusing statements regarding the setbacks and converting from compact to standard spaces along the southern border. They would still be getting the three-foot setback, whether they're compact or standard. The difference would be going to standard. They'd be encroaching two feet into the driveway. So I heard some reference to the encroached, or the setback being reduced from three to one, which wouldn't be true unless they narrowed to the driveway for the compacts. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, go ahead. What we're saying basically is this, Commissioner Wilcox, not giving you permission quite yet. What we're saying is that there's language in the variance criteria that says what is being sought is the minimum necessary for it to be approvable. And they, the proposed driveway width as originally presented was wider than it needed to be. And they were showing a situation where with compact spaces, they actually didn't need to request as big of a variance as they sought. So that was the suggestion is, well, if you just convert it to standard spaces and if that's kind of the community value that's desired, then you don't really have to change the degree of the variance you're seeking. You just reduce the drive aisle. If you want to do compact, however, then you need to basically push it in further because you technically have that room and you don't technically need to seek a variance of that degree.
With compact?
With compact.
Right.
But if you're doing a mix, then you probably just want to maintain the three foot, the roughly three foot variance request because then you're accommodating the standard and the compact regardless of where and how many you ultimately do of each.
Okay.
I hope that helped.
That answer your question?
Exactly. I think I'd prefer the 25-foot driveway with the three-foot setback and keep them compact myself.
Okay.
That could be effectively a condition of approval, that the applicant reverts back to the original plan as presented and that the updated plan must show the additional two feet gains and maintain the, or, yeah. I think I understood what you're saying, Commissioner.
Okay. All right.
If I may, to check with the applicant?
Yeah, okay, stay on.
These are always tough. These are always tough.
Motion to suggest it would be interesting to go through that.
It's a motion. Well, I think you'll go through all of them regardless to see which would, or at least that's what I want to know, is which would pass and which would fail.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Chair, for allowing that conversation to be had. Status quo, the applicant intends to continue working or submitting this application as presented and has expressed openness to some conditions of approval, obviously that are already there. But is intending to remain with what was presented.
Okay, okay, great. All right. So we have what's in front of us. And so at this time, it would be recommending conditions or making a motion on the application of the stand, starting with building height, to setbacks, to parking, to site design, plot line, and work.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Mamon.
Yes, my apologies, but if I understand correctly, we're going to vote on the variance for the height, which is approximately 11% differential from the standard, so minor variance, am I correct?
Yes, height would be the first one and it is.
Okay, but my, Mr. Chair again, my question is again, it is unclear to me, and I pointed out this two or three times before, what is the applicant is proposing? He's proposing a height variance. And again, the rendering show a flat roof, the elevation show a gable roof. Which one is which? Because we're voting on a variance. Might be a minor variance, 11%, but still we're voting on variance. We don't know what this gentleman is proposing yet.
Okay, Staff will take that.
If I may, item D speaks to two different building typologies. Buildings A, A through E have a requested 8.6% variance, which again, in a, in a normal circumstance is effectively an administrative adjustment. But because of the other stipulations of this application have been rolled up. The buildings F and G are for 11.4%. So you're dealing with actually two building typologies, which explains the situation you're seeing.
So does this mean that again, the applicant is proposing some buildings with a flat roof and some buildings with a gable roof, which is dramatically different when you look at the elevation versus the rendering? Let's not talk about technicality of.
Mr. Mamon. Mr. Mamon.
Mr. Mamon, there are no flat roofs, they are gabled roofs.
I'm sorry?
The roof.
Which drawing are we talking about that has flat roofs?
I look at the elevation that they are submitted to us. I mean, these are the package that I received. There is clearly a flat roof, while the elevation, all the elevation, clearly shows a gable roof. So maybe the applicant should respond this question.
Okay, we've actually gone to deliberation. My question would be is, can you point me to that drawing just like the same thing in front of me that you got?
Again, in the package that I received, I received, if you look at sheet A200 that shows the elevation, all, which shows a gable roof. On the back on A200, this is the package that I received, there is rendering, two render.
...the sequencing of the votes, because it is important as far as how, how the application should be approvable or denied. You would want to start with the variance to the building height as your first option. The variance then to the setback standard and then the variance to the parking standard, in that particular order. The variance standard for the setback has to go first because that basically was determining how many spaces ultimately and to what degree
It'd be.
Would it be, and that's based on the finding that you make for, for the setback. If you are unable to agree on the parking variance standards, if, if you have a finding that, that says it was not met, then effectively the application as a whole is unable to be approved, so you can stop there. If, um, because then it basically causes a cascading effect on the other, the other approvals.
Most likely though, the applicant would want to know what the outcome would be on the other one.
No, sure, I mean, but effectively that, um, if, if, if you're unable to agree to a variance on the parking, then therefore the site development review, the criteria wouldn't be met because the standards either as are or, or as modified through variance couldn't be met either. So it creates a little bit of a cascading effect.
Yes, Commissioner Wilcox.
Thank you. I was hearing some confusing statements regarding the setbacks and converting from compact to standard spaces along the, the southern bor- border. They would, they would still be getting the three-foot setback whether they're compact or standard. The difference would be going to standard, they'd be encroaching two feet into the driveway. So I heard some reference to the encroached, or the, the setback being reduced from three to one, which wouldn't be true unless they narrowed to the driveway for the compacts. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, go ahead. What, what we're saying basically is this, uh, Chair Wil- uh, excuse me, Commissioner Wilcox, not giving you permission quite yet. What we're saying is that you, there's language in the variance criteria that says what is being sought is the minimum necessary for it to be approvable. And they, the, the proposed driveway width as originally presented was wider than it needed to be. And they were showing a situation where with compact spaces, they actually didn't need to request as big of a variance as they sought. So that was the suggestion is, well, if you just convert it to standard spaces and if that's kind of the community value that's desired, then you don't really have to change the degree of the variance you're seeking, you just reduce the drive aisle. If you want to do compact, however, then you need to basically push it in further because you technically have that room and you don't technically need to seek a variance at that degree.
With compact.
With compact.
Right.
But if you're doing a mix, then you probably just want to maintain the three foot, the roughly three-foot variance request because then you're accommodating the standard and the compact regardless of where and how many you, uh, you ultimately do of each.
Okay.
I hope that helped.
That answer your question?
Exactly. I think I'd prefer the, the 25-foot driveway with the three-foot setback and keep them compact myself.
Okay.
That could be effectively a condition of approval, that the, the applicant reverts back to the original plan as presented and that the updated plan must show the additional two feet gains and maintain, maintain, um, the, or, yeah. I, I think I understood what you're saying, Commissioner.
Okay. All right.
If I may, to check with the applicant?
Yeah, okay, stay on. These are always tough. These are always tough.
Motion to suggest that would be interesting to go through that.
So it's a motion. Well, I think you'll go through all of them regardless to see which would, or at least that's what I want to know, is which would pass and which would fail.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Chair, for allowing that conversation to be had. Status vote, um, the applicant intends to continue working or, or submitting this application as presented and has expressed openness to some conditions of approval, obviously that are already there, but is intending to remain with what was presented.
Okay, okay, great. All right, so we have what's in front of us. And, um, so at this time, it would be recommending conditions or making a motion on the application as a stand, starting with building height, to setbacks, to parking, to site design, lot line, and, and work.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Mamone.
Yes, my apologies, but if I understand correctly, we're gonna vote on the variance for the height, which is approximately 11% deviation from the standard, so minor variance, am I correct?
Uh, yes, height would be the first one, and it is...
Okay, but my, Mr. Chair, again, my, my question is, again, it is unclear to me, and I pointed out this two or three times before, what is the applicant is proposing? He's proposing a height variance. And again, the rendering show a flat roof, the elevation show a gable roof. Which one is which? Because we're voting on a variance, might be a manual variance, 11%, but still we're voting on variance, we don't know what this gentleman is proposing yet.
Okay, uh, Staff will take that.
If I may, uh, item D speaks to two different building typologies. Buildings A, A through E have a requested 8.6% variance, which, again, in a, in a normal circumstances, effectively an administrative adjustment, uh, but because of the other stipulations of this application have been rolled up. The buildings F and G are for 11.4%. So you're dealing with actually two building typologies, which explains the, the, um, situation you're seeing.
So does this mean that, again, the applicant is proposing some buildings with a flat roof and some building with a gable roof, which is dramatically different when you look at the elevation versus the rendering? Let's not talk about, let's not talk about technicality of...
Mr. Mamone.
Mr. Mamone. Mr. Mamone, there are no flat roofs, they are gabled roofs.
I'm sorry?
The roof.
Which drawing are we talking about that has flat roofs?
I, I look at the elevation that they are submitted to us. I mean, these are the package that I received, there is clearly a flat roof, while the elevation, all the elevation clearly shows a gable roof. So maybe, maybe the applicant should, maybe the applicant should respond this question.
Um, okay, we've, we've actually gone to deliberation. My, my question would be, is can you point me to that drawing to sign the same thing in front of me that you got?
Well, again, in the package that I received, I received, if you look at sheet A200 that shows the elevation, oh, which shows a gable roof. On the back on A200, this is the package that I received, there is rendering, two renderings. And the renderings show a flat roof. So...
That, that is, that is a rendering from, from a, a street level, that is, it is, as the applicant described, a low pitched roof, but it is not a flat roof. It is just low pitched at, at an angle. And from that position...
So there is no flat roof. So there is no flat roof.
No flat roof, no.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, um, I'd entertain a motion on the variance for building height, if there's no further discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the finding variance to building height component for case file LU 0010-2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the variance to building height for case file LU 00102021 Fox Ridge Apartments. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all the rules.
Commissioner Whitton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamone?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
No.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Sheriff Stephenson?
Yes.
Okay. Next up would be the setback. And we, three feet, two inches?
That is correct.
Okay. And someone could motion to go to one foot, correct?
Someone could, could motion to amend, uh, fi- uh...
The setback.
The setback on criterion B to one foot and to, uh, add a condition of approval, which would have to be considered later, uh, to restore the compact spaces that's desired. But you have a motion right now and the active finding as amended, the one in front of you calls for three feet, two inches.
Right. Trying to give them options here.
I'll get...
Okay. Do we have a motion on the setback variance?
Sure, I'd make a motion that we approve the findings for variance for the setback standards for case file LU 00102021 as amended.
Okay. Ms. Schaffler?
Commissioner Whitton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamone?
No.
Commissioner Pickett?
No.
Commissioner Wilcox?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Sheriff Stephenson?
Yes.
Four, three. Okay, that passes. Okay, uh, next one is parking. Okay, we have parking as presented, uh, someone can also recommend a conditional change. I have a motion for the variance to parking standards.
No, it was amended to remove the compact and make them all standard.
Correct, that's the, the current proposal. Um, so that brings, again, the total for 327 parking, onsite parking spaces, total request is then for 12.6% off the 2.33 standard for a ratio of 1.97 spaces per unit. That excludes the 14 on-street spaces off Hensley, uh, excuse me, off Halsey Loop, um, which are added but not technically part of the variance request.
Yeah, I move we approve finding a variance parking standards component of case file LU 00102021 as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a, and a second to approve the variance for parking standards.
No, it was amended to remove the compact and make them all standard.
Correct, that's the, the current proposal. Um, so that brings, again, the total for 327 parking, onsite parking spaces, total request is then for 12.6% off the 2.33 standard for a ratio of 1.97 spaces per unit. That excludes the 14 on-street spaces off Hensley, uh, excuse me, off Halsey Loop, um, which are added but not technically part of the variance request.
Yeah, I move we approve finding a variance parking standards component of case file LU 00102021 as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a, and a second to approve the variance for parking standards for case file LU 00202021. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamone?
No.
Commissioner Pickett?
No.
Commissioner Wilcox?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Sheriff Stephenson?
Flight Commission, uh, you will have to go back to that, uh, variance criteria and rewrite a finding, uh, to switch that to a criterion not being met one or more. Um, what this also means is that the site development review component, uh, does not meet the standard, given your, your vote there. Staff recommendations, you move to the lot line adjustment and then you, uh, return to items three and four there on your screen to rewrite findings accordingly.
Okay. Um, so we'll move to item five and lot line adjustment. Do we have a motion for the finding for lot line adjustment component?
This is, uh, Commissioner Allen.
Okay.
Motion, motion to approve the findings for the lot line adjustment component of case file LU dash 0010 dash 2021 as presented.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the finding for lot line adjustment for case file LU 00102021 Fox Ridge Apartments. Any discussion on the motion? Go ahead.
Commissioner Whitton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamone?
No.
Commissioner Pickett?
No.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Sheriff Stephenson?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, um, the need, there is the need now to amend, uh, the findings as presented and amended for the standards for the parking lots. That is on page four of your, um, findings draft page. Just read at the top, findings of stack variance to required parking. You have four decision criteria, A through D, at least one of those will need to be rewritten to determine how the finding or the criterion were not met. Um, staff will take any suggestions from a potential no vote or a previous no vote on that to determine which standard to rewrite, or which finding to rewrite.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any, uh, thing they're passionate about here? Yeah.
We do need to, we do need to address this.
Yeah, I know. All right, so is there a particular place you guys are going with this? Which ones, I know which one to work on?
Uh, this is Commissioner Wilcox. I'd, I'd, uh, go with letter D, the variance is the minimum necessary.
Uh, because the variance allows for a greater than 80%?
Right, exactly.
So with the variance, oh, you want it written out?
It, it should be written out. Um, if you need to take a five-minute recess to write it, Mr. Chair, that could be advisable. You've done that before to rewrite a finding, um, and then it can be re-presented to the commission, commissioners, I should say.
Yeah, can we just take five minutes so I can do this? You better want to sleep it.
One moment.
So the minimum density requirement for the underlying zoning district is 80%. The requested variance would allow for a greater than 80% uh, density requirement for the subject property. The 12.6% parking reduction is not necessary to meet the 80% standard. So variance could be less than 12% to meet the standard.
I mean, u- using the, the language of the criterion, the variance is the minimum necessary.
Right.
So you're, if, if, without putting words in your mouth, what you're effectively trying to state here is that the minimum necess- necessary was not reached based on this request. They, they did not demonstrate that because...
They did not demonstrate that they had to have a 12.6% reduction to meet the minimum dens-
Because they were already in the middle of the density range.
Right.
For the underlying zoning district.
Right.
Do you have that written down so we can write it on the screen for the record?
No, you want me to go through that?
It probably should be, just so we have it for the record.
Okay.
One moment while we just load that up. Excuse me, one sec, I'm sorry. Again, dealing with multiple screens here. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
The minimum density requirement for the subject property is 80%. Um, the requested variance would allow for a greater than 80% minimum density requirement for the subject property.
So, I'm sorry, the requested variance would allow for a greater than 80%?
Mm-hmm.
Continue on the circuit.
And basically, we could say 90. Um, and the 12.6% parking reduction is not necessary to meet the 80% standard. did not prove that it was necessary to meet that 80% standard. Did not, that it was required to meet, that it was needed to meet the minimum standard of 80%.
That is meaning the variance?
Yes.
Any questions?
Application or applicant?
The applicant.
The applicant. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Mamone.
The minimum density requirement for the subject property is 80%. Is there a maximum density requirement?
There is, well, obviously, the maximum is 100%. And so you can develop to 100% and the minimum you can do is 80%. And so...
So the maximum is under, the maximum is not always 100%. So the maximum is 100% now for this, for this, because if you are above the minimum and, and you are within the minimum and the maximum, then there is no reason for a variance in the, to begin with. If the minimum density is equated 80%, and the, you said the requested variance would allow for a greater than 80%, then there is no, there is no requested variance. If you are within the minimum and the maximum, the applicant is doing exactly what the code is requested by principal permitted use, so...
The minimum, okay, the minimum is 80. So you would request, typically request a variance if you could not get to 80. You're developing the property and you can't get to 80% of standard, you request a variance to get there.
If it doesn't, but, but the language we, we have, the requested variance would allow for a greater than 80.
Right.
If you allow below, more than, than 80, you're already in compliance with the minimum.
Can you do that?
Yeah, and, okay, so they're requesting, their variance is going to give them greater than 80, they only need to be at 80. They're only required to be at 80.
Correct, they, they need to reach the minimum. So they are below 80% right now?
The, the application basic-
My, 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 my concern is that, Michael, sir, my, my confusion is that the requested variance would allow for a greater than 80%. If, if he reaches 80%, he's already in, doesn't need greater than 80% unless it's below, but is he below 80% right now?
We don't know.
Well, as presently, it's, with, with what was requested, it would have been at, at 90%.
So what the variance is at 90?
Again, once he reaches 80, if he, if he has 80, if he has 80, it's not an issue. If he, if he's not, if he's not at 80, then let's say what the number is, because once in the moment he's above 80, he's, he's a variance. So a greater than 80% to me introduce speculation and confusion. If he- if he's not, if he's not at eighty, then let's say what the number is, because once in the moment he's above eighty, he's- he's a variance. So, a greater than eighty percent to me introduce speculation and confusion. The requested variance would allow for a greater than eighty percent. Allow mo- more than the minimum or reach the minimum, is that what we tried to say?
Okay, so the minimum is a hundred and forty-eight. Correct? Is that right? Or is that their count?
Believe that would-
I think it's close to that.
It was close to that figure, yeah.
Okay. You get, you a hundred and forty-eight. Um, so, a hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and sixty-eight, a hundred and thirty-two? What's eighty percent? A hundred and thirty-two. Right?
Um, one moment.
I think eighty percent was a hundred and thirty-two.
Eighty percent is one forty-eight.
Eighty percent is one forty-eight, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, the maximum density was one eighty-six, the minimum was one forty-eight. And the request was for one sixty-six, they're pretty much square in the middle at ninety percent with some eighty-nine point whatever, effectively.
So what you're asking is, is the variance necessary for them to get to a hundred and forty?
No, my- my- my confusion is- is about the language we're using here, because let's make it simple, he's below eighty percent right now, he's requesting a variance to reach at least eighty percent so it can reach the minimum density, correct?
Correct.
Okay, one second, I- so my battery's running low, I don't know why.
That's my- that's my battery.
Okay, I'm sorry, great, great, just, I was- I was panicking. So, if- if- if this, very simple, he's below eighty percent, he needs to reach eighty percent minimum, and that's why he's asking a variance. So, the language we use after the first sentence to me introduce confusion. It's less- less simple, let's say what exactly it is. Because the applicant did not prove that the variance requested was needed to meet eighty percent, to me is confusing. The applicant wants the variance. The applicant has no show, shown, that it can reach the ed- with what his rationale, it can reach the eighty percent. So there- there, the variance is needed for him, but he has no show it, which is completely different rationale of it. So, let's say in a simple, in a simple way, that the applicant density is below eighty percent, he needs to reach eighty percent, otherwise, best way is apply for a variance. The variance does not prove, the finding of facts or whatever his rationale, does not prove, does not prove that he can reach the minimum density. Because the applicant did not prove that the variance requested was needed to meet the eighty percent standard, to me is confusing. Because it implicitly, implicitly means that- that- that the variance is not needed. No, the variance is needed because he wants to reach minimum, it's just he cannot prove it. And to me, those are different entities.
Well, he- he could not prove that the variance was needed to meet the density standard. So, in other words, he doesn't need a twelve percent parking variance reduction in parking to meet eighty percent.
How much is proposing right now?
Twelve point six.
No, 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 I'm sorry, he needs a density of eighty percent, what- what is the density that he needs to have? What- what is the density it's proposing?
Ninety.
The application as presented, Mr. Mamonie, if the variances were- were to have been approved, would have meant a ninety percent density, uh, utilization on the property. And I think what the chair is effectively trying to say here is that there perhaps could have been wiggle room afforded, which would have, um, maybe led meant less units, it still could have been within the density range of what's acceptable by code because that was not demonstrated, you were not able to create a finding that shows that the variance was the minimum necessary to support the development.
My apologies, my apologies, I don't mean to come out petulant here, but again, I'm- I'm confused. The minimum density requirement for subject property is eighty percent. How much is the applicant proposing right now?
Ninety percent. Ninety.
Okay, so if we just told me that the minimum is eighty, the maximum is one hundred, and he's proposing ninety, why are we discussing a variance? He's- he's- he's be- at a level of density is where he's supposed to be.
And that's why we're not doing the variance, because we haven't met the burden of proof to reduce it by twelve percent.
But it does, it is no base of parking lots, of parking spaces, based on units or square footage or area of, whatever you want to call it, whatever you define in your code, it's not a parking requirement, the parking requirement is- is an accessory to- to the number of unit, depending if you do this by units or by one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom requirement, or by extra percentage for visitors, whatever it be.
Correct, correct, it all comes back to the overall development and number of units. The more units you have, the more parking spots you have.
Okay.
Chair, just to essence of time, just clarifying that I understand what you're saying as well as we could have, he could, they could have proposed to reduce the number of units closer to eighty percent and not needed the parking variance is essentially it.
Correct, or perhaps the degree of the parking variance being thought, correct.
Yes.
That's the minimum, that's the very standard in the- in the criterion.
Does that make sense to the rest of you? Hearing nothing. Okay. Alright, do the rest of you have any comments, or do you have any suggested text?
Commissioner Pritchett, your- your microphone is off.
I kind of agree with, uh, Commissioner Mamonie, it's- it's confusing. When you're using variance and, uh, density in the same sentence, it- it makes it sound like they're asking a variance for density, which is entirely incorrect. It's like you're, it's like, it's like- part, it's like park- it's like parking is driving density rather than density driving parking.
So, one way you could maybe think of it as, view it as two separate paragraphs. And effectively, what you're saying is the, what- what the chair's, ignore this second part here for just a moment. The chair is saying basically, look, there are minimum standards for density, eighty percent. And in the general philosophy behind how this comment is being written, variances like this should only be applied for, and frankly granted, if it takes that variance for the minimum density to be allowed for this property. What's effectively being said is that this proposal was overbilled for the capacity of the property based on all things considered, and as a result, the parking standard, the parking variance request was too much because there might have been, it was- it was designed to serve a level of development on that site that may not have been appropriate for that site to begin with. Because it could have been scaled back further. And that was not proven by the applicant. That's effectively what you need to say. If- if I'm, I think I'm understanding what you're saying, but I'm not sure how to put that in words, and frankly, this is your decision and your-
And Chris, man-
I appreciate all the help when it came to writing this, too, okay?
No, it's a com- it's a complex, it's a complex sentence, I- I agree with all of you, Chris, I- and it's difficult to put in on the fly, but- but- but the second sentence-
Well, you have to, because this is a legal finding.
Right, we don't have a choice. We have, we have to do it.
But the second sentence is the one that confuses. If- if he's, you don't need a variance to allow for a greater than eighty percent density. Because at eighty percent or above, you are within the limits where the code allows you to be. If you are below eighty, you're a problem, but if you are above, you don't need a variance. Once you're eighty-five, you need a variance. You are within eighty or one hundred, but you told me it's the maximum. So you're between the minimum and the maximum, is the second sentence that try, start to derail everything. And it goes a different direction, maybe then the intent-
Okay, and so you would say what?
Well, again, Mr. Chair, I- I'm not suggesting, but if, let- let's try to say in simple words what we are after. And then, we- we- we write it technically. We, what we want to say, if I understand correctly, is that first of all, a question will be, why was a variance, because again, if it is below eighty, is below eighty percent. So he needs to reach eighty percent. As he has no, he has no proven that he can reach eighty percent. Is that what we're trying to say?
The development is designed for, or proposed for ninety percent density standard.
Which is okay, it's between the minimum eighty and the maximum one hundred. So why the variance?
The proposed development is, is ninety percent density. Which, in addition, the- the applicant is asking for a twelve point six percent parking reduction.
I- I am inclined to agree with this Commissioner Mamonie again. I dropped that second sentence entirely that starts with the requested variance. Variance and density I don't think belong in the same sentence. You could just say, uh, leave the first sentence and, um, just say something to the effect that, the variance is not required at eighty percent density. I mean, that's, that'd be a lot more simple.
A twelve point six percent parking standard would not be required to meet eighty percent density. Correct?
Right.
This is, uh, Commissioner Allen. When you get a moment.
Another county heard from, yes, Commissioner Allen.
So, if we went to the original proposal of the spaces being, um, compact spaces, would they have met their- their criteria?
I'm sorry, Mr. Allen, I had trouble hearing you.
Without a variance?
Uh, it'd still be a variance, but would the variance have been acceptable had we continued with the original proposal of the compact spaces? Which basically gives you seven extra spaces, I think it was.
Well, when you're- I don't know if it would have been acceptable, we didn't do that.
But you- you- you did approve, uh, a finding, which, although it was a four-three, where that- that component of the application basically said you do not have a problem with- with the conversion of the count, so by nature, you would not have had a problem with the loss of seven spaces, that's how-
Right.
You could be interpreted. But that's not the crux of your issue here. The- the crux, what, trying to be, how you're trying to work with this, is you- you basically want to say the capacity of the site is less than what is being proposed. Even though it is within the acceptable range of density, the fact of the actual property itself do not suggest, as currently presented, that- that a variance should be granted or approved to reduce parking. So does that need to be said in the writing?
You can put it down.
Okay, the- the figures I'm showing for my calculations are, at one forty-eight times two point three-three is three hundred and forty-five spaces. And they've current, they were at three forty-eight, but then they lost seven, so they're at three forty-one. So-
Subtracting, subtracting the fourteen on-street spaces on-
Right, gets us to the twelve percent.
I'm- I'm giving, I'm giving them the fourteen.
Giving them fourteen, but that's not what can be applied, um, with this particular variance request.
It's twelve percent for, twelve percent off the total.
For all-street parking, that's the standard you have to take into account.
Yep. Okay.
What about the third paragraph, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I like it.
Much better.
So, what- what can be erased or deleted or highlighted for- for your- your draft here? What can be taken out?
Uh, Chris, maybe- maybe the second paragraph, a twelve point six percent parking reduction, is that what you mean?
Thank you.
And maybe the, maybe the- the following paragraph. Uh, the planning commissioner finds that although the proposal is within a range of acceptable density, the facts and nature of the property in question cannot support a density of the- of the level with a requested parking reduction amounting to a variance of twelve point six percent, is that what we mean?
Yes.
Okay, so, with our requested parking reduction amounting to a variance of twelve point six percent. That- that is what we meant, right, all along? I would say if we can add something, amounts, doesn't have to be the words, but between reduction and variance, amounting to a variance of twelve point six percent.
And then put in how many spaces?
Yeah. Now, to me, this second par- this third paragraph explains exactly for what I was missing from the beginning. We, because we were making, of course, we're all technical people in some respect, and we have a specific view, but we were made in gigantic lip of fate and, but the semantic is still important, so now it's very clear, okay? Wonderful. Still, it is for me, this is very clear, if I read it in a vacuum in two years, in six months, and I read it, that is very clear what the applicant is requesting and what the commission is doing. Thank you.
Um, one- one quick note, Mr. Chair, because you, basically, this sentence and this sentence are roughly the same.
Correct, so it's the top one that go, yeah.
This one?
The upper one, yeah.
I will remove the last one. Because again, I read, is, a- a- a variance is not necessary. Because again, I read, is, a, a variance is not necessary.
Okay. Do you want to write it? Okay, in the red text, you want to take out?
That's the question, because I think that was, the concern was it would, it would complicate the issue or.
I don't care.
So, so they're still going to require a variance even at eighty percent?
Good.
You don't know that.
Yeah, you don't know. You have no idea. I guess the point is it could have been developed. Possibly, with a lesser variance. We don't know.
You were unable to determine that.
Right. Okay, do we need anything else?
Maybe you add the sentence, the planning commission was unable to determine if that could occur.
Okay.
So that's, that's the proposal.
All right. Okay, edit that. And that would go in under D?
E, yeah.
That would replace the existing finding.
Entirely?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So the motion then you would want to entertain, Mr. Chair, is to approve the findings for the variance of the parking standard. So again, your, your, a yes vote here approves the findings that were just written on the screen as amended. So approval here just approves the language. It does not mean you're having a final action on the application in itself. It just approves the language as written, that they did not meet that criteria. So that's the suggested motion.
All right. Did you guys catch that? Would be a motion for number three to amend finding D to include, whatever we're going to call that.
To, to adopt. So the motion would be again, to approve or deny, excuse me, to approve the variance for parking lots, parking, the variance for parking standard components of LU zero zero one zero twenty twenty-one as amended by the planning commission.
Right. Okay.
That's your, your motion. A yes, a yes vote adopts the language. It does not deny the application because that's still a separate motion.
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I move that we approve the findings for the variance to the parking standards component of case file LU zero zero dash zero zero dash zero zero one zero dash two zero two one as amended by the planning commission.
Okay, don't everybody chime in.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the finding for the variance for parking standards as amended, or for D to be amended as the planning commission for LU zero zero one zero two zero two one Foxridge Apartments. Hey, discussion on the motion.
This is Commissioner Allen. Can you help me understand what this means in practical terms? What would the developer need to do?
The developer would need to, if he wanted that same variance, he would need to basically come back with a compelling. He would have to meet the criteria saying that basically he has to have that to develop the lot. That, in a nutshell.
That's your interpretation of it.
What's yours?
Well, I think it's to each individual county commissioner, because that's.
Chris, from my understanding, so the motion is based on the amendment that you just, you just did, correct? With, in the end, the motion is denied.
The motion, if you, if you vote yes here, it is to adopt the language, which would ultimately deny the application.
Does not meet the test. That's what your language when you, when you were typing it, correct?
Yes.
Right.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
So a yes vote basically is denied. Okay. Any other discussion?
Commissioner Whitton?
No.
Commissioner Wadilla?
No.
Commissioner Mamon?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
No.
Chair Saffinson?
Yes. Commissioner Prickett, can you clarify your vote? You came across a little fuzzy there.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Thank you. That's that.
Okay.
Okay, you're now moving on to item four, Mr. Chair. This is now you will have to amend, and this will be easy, you will have to amend your findings for the site development review. And the simple action to take here is if you look on your draft findings, title, Finding Effect Site Development Review, that's page six, I believe, in your packet. Six point nine two zero, section six point nine two zero B, criterion one, sub criterion one. The draft as originally presented suggested it was conditionally met if the variances were approved. You strike through that simply, and you say the variance for the parking, the parking lot reduction was denied. Therefore, the criterion is not met.
Okay. Write that.
Down in the final order.
All right. So what we are doing is we're looking for a motion on site and design review to amend item one point one.
No, I'll, I'll give you the motion here, sir.
Well, that's what we're doing, though, is we're amending one point one, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry.
To the criteria not being met based on the denial of parking variance.
So the suggested motion is on the screen on item four, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. Number four.
Correct.
Yep. Okay, come on, guys. Nobody likes that?
I think Shirley said something.
Shirley, I'm, you want to unmute there, Mr. Prickett?
Do I have to? No.
Yeah, you do.
Okay. I move that we approve the findings for site development review of case file LU dash zero zero one zero dash two zero two one Foxridge Apartments as amended by the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve finding a fact site development review, re, review, I'm sorry. As amended in section one point one by the planning commission for file LU zero zero one zero two zero two one Foxridge Apartments. And we're amending one point one to say the criteria is not met. Correct?
Due to the parking lot variance.
Right. Okay, any discussion on that? No?
So I, I want to be clear, so we're approving findings that deny. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Similar to the last motion, Mr. Wilcox.
We're approving the finding and because the finding is denying it.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Commissioner Whitton?
No.
Commissioner Wadilla?
No.
Commissioner Mamon?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
No.
Chair Saffinson?
Yes.
Four-three?
Yeah. Okay.
And now, Mr. Chair, you're at item six. The motion would be to deny the final order in conditions of approval for case file LU zero zero ten twenty twenty-one Foxridge Apartments as amended. This would be the ultimate, this is effectively the, the vote on the application in itself.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Prickett?
I move that we, well, go. Can't remember what I was supposed to say here. Never mind. I lost my train of thought. Sorry.
Okay. Next player.
Chair, I make a motion that we deny the final order of condition for approval for case file LU zero zero one zero two zero two one.
Thank you.
Okay.
I second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Whitton, second by Commissioner Prickett, to deny final order and decision for case file LU zero zero one zero two zero two one Foxridge Apartments.
And because it is a motion of denial, a yes in vote means you are denying the application.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Whitton.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, here we go.
Commissioner Whitton?
No.
Commissioner Wadilla?
No.
Commissioner Mamon?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
No.
Chair Saffinson?
So just a quick clarification. We have to deny it because the variance did pass.
You're taking the vote right now.
Yeah, I know.
But I mean, with your yes vote, it is denied.
Yeah. Okay.
But if a yes, if the, if the no's were to have prevailed, you would have to go effectively back to the drawing board on the conditions of approval or, or the final order. But effectively.
If the no prevailed.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. Okay, and I'm, I'm voting yes for procedural. And so that is, that is denied.
Mr. Chair, in the interest of time, the discussion item four A, just want to do a brief summary on it, just as a heads up. And to four B, to postpone that to the next meeting. Paul, your call. It's your meeting, but we didn't have a whole lot to talk about with the tax amendment other than to remind the group that that was a request by Mr. Whitton to bring up for this meeting.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Uh, sorry. I'm sitting here and let me.
You guys about had enough? Looking a little tagger. Okay, so probably don't want to take out electric fences tonight. Correct?
Correct. I'm good at a different time, since I'm the one that brought it up.
Okay, so we're going to take A and B both and move them into two thousand twenty-five.
All right.
I, I just want to say too, I do think Commissioner Mamon brought up a very interesting point, and I think we should have that as a discussion point.
With regard to.
Application. Review.
Well, that's going to be part of your discussion with, with the C item.
No, I know. I just want to make sure that we, we get that, that in there so we can discuss, you know, the piece of how do you make a development better? Because it's, I, I've been on the other side of it, and it's really hard when you get to this point and somebody says. So maybe we, we can do it better. I don't know, maybe we can't, but it's something we should talk about, I think.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Real quick, in the interest of time. Hey, heads up, we are closed for Labor Day. That is Monday, the sixth. I mean, anybody going out of town, have a good weekend on that. Your next meeting is on the eighth. They will be discussion oriented. We are going to talk about the MU one, MU two zoning district carrying over also the electric fence and tax amendment. I don't anticipate the electric fence taking too long because you're going to have a tax amendment, but just basically we need clarification on a couple of things from you all to prepare that. The B topic and the mixed-use district is going to be one that will take more than one meeting, we're sure of. It is a big lift, so some capitated, but thankfully you won't have a hearing that night. Couple of other calendar items for you to put in. There is a chance potentially we may have an appeal of a type-two or staff-level decision. We'll keep you posted if we get anything on that front. It is involving an ADU application. On Wednesday, September twenty-ninth, we are currently targeting that date to have the annual rent burden meeting that we're required to do for state law. This year, because of COVID, it's a little bit up in the air exactly the format, but we do know the date. And if there is an in-person situation, Troutdale Terrace, which is one of the apartments adjacent to the site on location, they have a community room, they would be hosting it. It is not a mandated meeting for this body to be at. We strongly encourage it because obviously this body has had to tackle housing policy before. And in the past, CAC has been involved with it. But because you have such a heavy docket this fall already, we didn't want to take up one of your regular nights on that topic. The format will be different than in years past, hopefully more engaging, and I know there'll be more members of the public that will be engaged in it by, by agenda, by being on the agenda. Another date to keep in mind, that is Wednesday, October twentieth, that is between your two meeting dates. That's the third Wednesday of the month. We're going to have an open house of some sort on the Park Master Plan. The idea right now is if it is in person, it would be at Troutdale Elementary School, running from basically when class gets out, so we can get kiddos and parents involved right at the get-go, so we have a captive crowd through early evening. right at the get-go, so we have a captive crowd through early evening. So we'll have more details on both of those open houses, and we'll let you all know through email and through announcements here.
How's the project going, by the way?
Pretty well, they had a presentation with city council last night, got council feedback, a lot of it was focused, not just on bells and whistles, but also a real splash of cold water, understanding that these things cost money to maintain, there are staffing concerns, there's overcapacity concerns, there are questions about whether the parks are geographically distributed properly, so it'll be a good discussion. And the consultant is, we're very happy to work with them.
Who's doing it?
MIG, they're a pretty good firm, and they've worked in Troutdale before. So that's it, I'm sure there's probably other things we're forgetting, Amber or Alex, but that's probably good enough for tonight. Thank you for your diligence and duration.
All right. Guys, Commissioner Allen, anything?
Yeah, just on the development we had voted on, I hope we give feedback to the developer as to what would have made it more desirable and more likely to pass. Will staff be giving that feedback back to him?
Staff provided some of that feedback during the break, and yeah, there'll be an after-action discussion with them. Obviously, they are a party to it, they also carry an appeal right, and I'm sure they will evaluate that option, too. So we'll have an after-action with them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Prickett?
I don't have anything, but have a safe, more Labor Day weekend.
Commissioner Momoney?
Mr. Chair, yes, I think I'm going to have a couple of comments this time. First of all, thank you very much to all of you for allowing me the latitude and the time to express my thought, I know there's some time, there are a lot to come, but I'm very grateful to you to be patient with me and to allow me to elaborate in a verbal way, this acality in my brain. I enjoy our conversation very much, I'm glad to be able to be back after two missed meetings, I was serving a grand jury for a month, even this, this evening, in spite of our conversation, is much better than serving 10, 12 hours a day for a month on a grand jury, this is wonderful. And again, Mr. Chair, thank you for your kind words, I don't, I don't, I know a time I might come like a difficult person, but at heart, I really care for the city very much, I did not take this position in reply if it was otherwise, so I know there's some time, and I think maybe all of us have the strength of our opinions, but I'm willing for a strong, civil, robust debate, and we dare to change it, but again, thank you very much to all of you, I enjoy our meeting, our conversation, I appreciate your collaboration very much and your support, thank you.
We always get there, and it's always a process, so thank you. Anything? There he is.
I had to chase my mouse, chase down my mouse. I just wanted to say, I really appreciated Commissioner Momoney's comments about the layout of the project, not that we have any say or it, but I think he made some really excellent points about the livability aspect and all that, and that's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Whitehead?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay, Commissioner Whitton?
Nothing at this time, other than to say, thank you all for the robust conversation, and I think there's a lot of respect on this commission, and we try to all passionately get stuff done, but thank you all.
Yeah, and I want to echo that, I just want to thank all of you for your time and dedication to the process, and be part of the discussion, it's really important, and we make some really tough decisions sometimes. And I just want to thank everybody, and especially staff, for all the work that they put into this. It's a lot of work, and it's really difficult, it takes time, so thank you. Okay, with that, let's go home.
I move that we...
Thank you, I'm going to see you later, good night.
Okay.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Chris, really appreciate it.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
Okay, we have one second to adjourn, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, good night, everyone.